Oh, there she is. She's sitting in the back.
Oh, yeah, that is right. I know. How you doing?
Oh, twenty years. That's a blink of an eye.
You still play?
It actually is a blink of an eye.
I don't play volleyball. Are you? The Golay place? You play at the Golay Center?
I'm just gonna let him talk about it when he does his thing. Okay, we will call the September 28th, 2022 Commissioners Meeting to order. If you would please rise for the pledge and a prayer, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we ask that you be with all those people in Florida experiencing this hurricane. Lord, be with them. Be with our country, be with our county, and help this meeting to be conducted in accordance with your will. In Jesus' name, amen.
Make sure I don't skip things like I did last time. Have the Commissioners had the opportunity to review the minutes of the previous meetings?
Make motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion by Steve Dellinger, second by Ed Tarantino. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Have the Commissioners had the opportunity to review the claims?
Make a motion to accept the claims as presented.
Second.
Motion by Steve Dellinger, second by Ed Tarantino. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. We'll go on to payroll. Have the Commissioners had the opportunity to review payroll?
Make a motion to accept payroll as presented.
Second.
Motion by Steve Dellinger, second by Ed Tarantino. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. We just have two reports this time. One for the weights and measures monthly report and the treasurer's monthly report. Do I have a motion to accept these reports as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve Dellinger, second by Ed Tarantino. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Okay, we have a food and beverage claim for, looks like, the Canard Crusaders for their project. It's for $2,700 to Stephen Warsham and $3,600 to Dobson Plumbing. Do I have a motion to accept this claim as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve Dellinger, second by Ed Tarantino. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. And then we have project number forty, which is the Jordan reading for the Saddle Club, for $2,250 for their project, or this part of their project. Do I have a motion to accept this claim as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve Dellinger, second by Ed Tarantino. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. And the last food and beverage claim is for the, will we write birthplace? Update in the, let's see. I'm here, it says something different. The invoice here is for $775. Oh, it's their 20% match. So it's for, minus their 20% match, so it's $659.97. Do I have a motion to accept this claim?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve Dellinger, second by Ed Tarantino. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Cory could not be here tonight, so, or, excuse me, or Penny. So I told them I would speak briefly about an update for the Henry County Newcastle Make My Move program. It was a collabora-, it's a collaboration between the city and the county to attract hopefully up to twenty remote workers to move into Henry County. Henry County is now on their website, so if you go to Make My Move, you will see Henry County on the website. And from what I understand, we've gotten several nibbles of interest throughout the process and in various stages of the process. So I believe they said that maybe, and we don't have everything up there. And there, I don't know if you remember, fifteen, I thought that was fifteen. Yeah, fifteen have, are in various stages of the process. So, and we don't really have 100% of the program live yet or out there with information. So that's an exciting, exciting thing for Newcastle and for Henry County. So see, I can speak for Cory in about two minutes, and he takes fifteen. So, ha, there you go. Shonda is not here. Scott, do you have anything?
Hi, that's on. We had a successful golf tournament. We combined with the Newcastle Athletics. And we raised money for them and a chunk of money for the 529 program we have setting up. The big thing coming up is Saturday, where the time capsule goes into the safe. That program will start at five o'clock. We'll have Ricky Kotman will sing his song about the county, and we'll have a few people speak. Has someone asked one of you to speak? Or did Aaron ask about, did you suggest someone else?
No, we hadn't been approached about any of us speaking, but we can, we can make that happen.
Okay.
If needed. I knew they were wanting to try to keep the program a little brief.
Good, short, yeah. Because we're gonna talk at five, and we're gonna have everything people have asked to be put in. The time capsule will be on display downstairs, so that people can look at it before six o'clock. It's all put in.
It's all put in.
So.
And locked up. It's gonna be locked up at six o'clock?
We think.
I think, we think.
There might be a few things that aren't in there yet.
That you have to be put back in. As long as somebody has the combination.
You do, you do, don't you? Yeah, several people do.
Several people do.
There you go.
Although I have suggested that we bury the vacuum tube with an odorant that goes, psych, hire a locksmith.
There you go. But, yeah, that's what's coming up. So other than that, we still have our library talks. The next one's about Maxwell and Chrysler in early October at the library. So that's what's coming up.
All right, we'll see you on Saturday.
All right, thank you.
Jeannie.
Everybody's been really short and concise, so we'll try to.
You're fine, you're fine. And you might need to pull the microphone a little bit closer to you, because you're tall, and the taller people are the.
I have a big mouth, though, Bobby, so you probably hear me. Okay, so I'm Jeannie, I'm the site director. I've had the privilege of meeting all of you now. Just met Bobby a few days ago. And I work for Ivy Tech Community College. I've been with the college for 23 years, and I'm from Henry County. And in those 23 years, I worked in Muncie for eight, I went to Richmond for ten, and then this position opened, and I was tickled to death because I really believe in what Ivy Tech does. I'm passionate about the opportunities we offer, and now I get the chance to do it here at home. So it's been a while. When I first came to town, I took a few minutes and talked to the Commissioners about what we were doing and what we hoped to do. And I just wanted that opportunity again, so I'll just take a few minutes. Ivy Tech is the largest community college in the nation because of the way we're structured. And our structure is different because no matter if you're to campus in South Bend or Evansville or Henry County, we're all one system. Which means that students can flow wherever they need to flow within the state. Each site, which is what we are here, because we're small, we're tied to like a parent campus. And our parent campus is Muncie, so we operate under the Muncie umbrella. When I came here, we had just a couple of staff that worked the front end. And we've grown over the last few years. We've just added two positions within the last six months, and we will add another position. And those are all front end. We added an advisor, somebody to work directly with student applications. And then we're adding somebody like administrative care. So our population, pre-COVID and now post-COVID, were remaining steady. And I think in the day and age that we're living in, that's a good thing. But let's talk about what we can, what we're actually doing for the county. We have a very good program that we work in conjunction with the Career Center. And so what happens with the Career Center? We have some students that are in specific programs at the Career Center, and they take what are called dual credit classes. So those classes are where their high school teacher actually teaches the class. They've been credentialed by Ivy Tech, just like a regular instructor. Most of our programs require a master's degree and sixteen credit hours in the subject that you're teaching. So those kids take those classes at the Career Center at no cost. We also have that out at the high schools themselves on a smaller level and more general education related. There's another program called Early College, and that involves seniors. They apply to the Career Center. They come to the Ivy Tech campus four days a week. They have two classes per semester. They're taught along with our regular students in a regular classroom. The really nice part about that program is it costs those students nothing. The Career Center splits the cost at a reduced tuition rate, so it's $75 per credit hour. And then Ivy Tech picks up the other side of that cost. So those students have the advantage, again, of walking out with those credits under their belt at no cost. We have other adult students, of course, that we deal with. We have a nursing program that has forty students in a cohort each year that they walk through and lockstep and complete at the end of that cohort time. We also offer a variety of, we just added design technology. So we're doing some design classes. We are adding industrial electrical. So the room right now has general education set up in the middle. And around the outskirts, we have some pieces of equipment where we're hoping to start those industrial technical classes. So that's a big win for Henry County, because we've kind of just been, you know, going along slowly. In terms of graduates, in our summer semester, we only have about 100 students that attend in the summer. But we graduated seventeen students last summer, two with, no, eight with associate's degrees, and then the smaller degrees that we have. In the fall semester, we graduated fifty-seven students. And in the spring semester, we graduated 141. And a large part of those were our high school population that get, you know, a CNA certificate or pre-nursing studies or machine tool or welding, all of those things out of the Career Center. So if those students opted to, they could just go right on into the job market. And I could, I had a student in a class, she was in the welding program. Very good welder, I loved it, because she drove this big old honkin' truck, and the quarter panels had rusted out, and she had taken those quarter panels off and rewelded them onto her truck. And then she got a job at a local employer here in town, and I believe she's still there with them. So those are the kinds of stories that really matter to us. What are some other things that we can do, aside from the regular classes that we offer? We can go out to employers and say, what do you need? How can we help you? And we can specifically tailor what they want to their needs. We work closely with Grady. Grady has a group of workers that they want to skill them up as they go along. And recently in the paper, John Waters was one of our graduates in the spring. John was one of the first students I met when I came to Henry County, and he's worked at Grady since he was nineteen. He came in, started taking classes just on their recommendation. Here he is down the road, and he realized that they needed an internal HVAC person because it was costing a lot for contractors. So John has his HVAC degree, and he's just moved on up the ladder and is a valuable employee. And that's a direct result of Ivy Tech being there and available. We go to the foundry, we sign the students up. It's a really good program that Grady has to offer. We also can go in and say, okay, you need, we talked to Highflex out of Knightstown recently. They need some blueprint reading and welding classes. We're in the beginning stages of that. But how can we fit that into your, what you need? Do we go to the plant and do the classes there? Do we offer them here? Whatever they need to do. So I really feel like this site is growing. We're unusual in that we had so much county and city support when we were building this. And I feel like even though we're still small, we have a gem within our midst, talking about make your move. This is gonna be one of the selling points as we interest employers and residents coming back here. So I just wanted to come and share some information with you. And if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call and let me know.
I'm glad, I'm from New Jersey, and I, my wife, I've heard her several times using the word honkin'.
Sorry, sorry.
I thought she made it up, but now I heard you use it, I feel much better.
So you can see I really am, you know, polished in my speech when I'm doing this.
I like the word, I just wasn't sure it was the word, now I am.
Based it on for me. Are there any questions or anything I can answer?
I'm assuming that you do other businesses just besides Grady. And you tailor it to each one of the, each individual company?
Yes, actually.
Because they don't have a, I'm sure that they don't have the resources to have in-house training to train up people.
And that's one of the other things that we haven't really gotten off the ground yet. We were looking at how we can work with the justice-involved people. And our idea initially was to cohort them and lockstep them through a series of classes on that industrial electrical certificate. And we just didn't have enough participants buy-in and be committed to the program at this point. So we're meeting with Susan in a few weeks to say, okay, how can we revamp this? What, you know, where can we start? So yes, other companies, and with the addition of staff, I've been able to step back a little bit and say, okay, now what do we need to do? And been able to get outside the doors, you know.
And do those things, yeah.
We talked to American Senior Communities, which has a couple of nursing homes here in town, doing the same thing with them. And then we recently have talked to NLC, New Lisbon Broadband. Apparently, there's no broadband technician training set up in the United States with any consistency. So we're investigating how can we take that and at least get it started and see what we can do. And the chancellor's committed to having that at Henry County. Which is, I think it's gonna take a minute to build those blocks, but it's gonna be a good potential for here. So, good things going on.
Thank you for all you do.
Sure, thank you.
Bruce.
Hello, I'm Bruce Aaron, and I'm here hoping to clear up something that happened 27 years ago. And I was taken by surprise here a couple of weeks ago that the road at River Ridge, River Crest Drive and the other street, Eastbrook. We did this subdivision 27 years ago. And as far as I can remember, we did everything according to the county's specs, everything that was expected to do. And anyway, I've got information here, best I could dig up, so I'd like to give each one of you all one.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
If you notice, some things are highlighted. I think the first, maybe the second page, I'm not sure. It says bond is being prepared and given to the Commissioners to cover the work, the street work. Of course, everything was approved by the Commissioners at that time. Now, I just found today the deed dedication to the county. And then on another page, the amendment to River Ridge subdivision, deed of dedication for street rights of way, which is signed by the Commissioners at that time. Of course, the plat itself, signed by the Commissioners at that time. So 27 years of use of that road, it's starting to, the surface is starting to deteriorate a little bit. So I'm would like to see the county to do some repair there.
I'm waiting for Joel to stop writing for a second. I guess, can you explain anything on?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the first question, is currently part of our inventory? It is not on our inventory with NDOT.
So I guess.
This is a situation we've kind of run into with other subdivisions in the past, where that subdivisions have been platted, but the county has apparently never taken action to accept the roads into as part of the system.
Even with this deed dedication?
Even with the deed dedication.
Okay.
I think that's happened in the past, and it generally takes affirmative action to accept the roads into the system. And I guess I don't know to what extent would be needed to give them to the specs. I guess either as existed in '95 or as existing currently.
Hey, I would assume with all the information in minutes that was built to county standards at that time. Today's standards are different.
Joe, I mean, you've been over that road.
Joe, you want to come down so you can be on the mic, please? And I'm just asking him to come down so he can be on the microphone, because we're live streaming. So he can, we can hear, yeah.
My question to Joe is, I'm sure he's been on the road recently, and I'm sure he could tell you the condition of the road, you know, 27 years later.
For being 27 years old, it's in pretty good shape for being.
Having that much age on it.
So I guess the question becomes, what next?
And I mean, there are a couple of ways to handle this, the Commissioners handled this, I guess, in the past. I mean, it would be, when I'm trying to think, it was a subdivision where the roads were never constructed to county standards, and I believe we entered into some kind of cost sharing arrangement with the property owners who were there to contribute to the cost of getting them to county standards and then taking them into the system. So I guess that would be one option. I mean, certainly, I think it would be within your discretion to vote to take them into the system or, you know, suggest that some upgrade or repair may require to take them into the system.
Mr., Mr. Aaron was obviously under the assumption that he had done everything he needed 27 years ago.
And this is a little different scenario than the previous instance where the roads were never built to standard. In this instance, it sounds like it more likely than not were built to standard at the time. It's just a formal act of taking them in, never happened between 1997 or 1998, whatever it was.
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five.
He has documentation where the Commissioners signed off on it. What was he lacking? What are we lacking?
Something that indicated that property was, or that the roads were formally assessed by the Commissioners and then corresponded and approved with NDOT, that that was part of our county road system. And that that counts toward mileage that they would receive funding for the roads.
That part didn't take place.
That part didn't, apparently.
Apparently, it was not recorded, or, yeah.
Was that a mistake by the county?
Who can say?
Hard to say at this point.
I guess my question is, what do we do to rectify it from this point going forward?
I think that's what, when Joel was saying, I wrote it down.
They're spending no funding, and I know that the Highway Department's strapped for, I don't know what we could do this year. I mean, Joe and I have talked about it. We could probably do some patchwork, but as far as resurfacing it, I know we don't have the money to do that at this point.
So the, the options that Joel gave is kind of like the previous one, you know, cost sharing to get them to, I don't know what, I don't know what the difference is between current standards and standards, and I don't know what those have changed. I imagine they've changed either a cost sharing to get them up to current standards and then take them in, or just take them into the system as is? Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. And I mean, I think, like I said, I think it's different than the other scenario that the Commissioners dealt with. They had at least some pretty good idea that these were in fact constructed to standards at the time, some division would have been developed versus the other scenario that actually just never were.
And you've driven out?
Well, so I drove on it, I think it was a week ago. I mean, I wish my road was in that good a shape. But, yeah, I mean, the roads would pass for most county roads. I mean, Joe can attest to whether it meets standards or not.
You know, going into, facing winter here pretty soon, you know, something's not done soon. You know, chip and seal, some patchwork or whatever. You know, if it's, if something's not done before winter, I mean, next spring, it's gonna be a lot worse.
Well, I'm not sure. That would take some discussion with Joe, but. You know, that would take some discussion with Joe, but that we can do anything right with it, because this came at us. He didn't have any time to plan for this. It was not on his agenda for the year as, as a road to be repaired. So I'm not saying that it could even be repaired this year. But I would make a motion that we accept these roads into the county. And they may not get fixed for a few years because they are obviously better than quite a few other roads in the county, even though they may need to be repaired.
Because we did it right.
What's that?
That's because we did it right 27 years ago.
Right. And I, you do have paperwork that other people have come before, did not have. They didn't put the roads into standard at the time. The standards may be different now, but that wasn't your fault. You put it into the standards there. So I guess my motion would be that, not that we repair it immediately, but that we do accept these roads as part of the county road system.
I would like to ask, I mean.
I, I have some more questions before we move forward with the motion.
Do you have any recommendations, comments, whatever, Joe, on what we can and should and shouldn't be doing at this point?
And I, and I guess, who plows your snow in the wintertime?
I thought the county was doing it. I mean, as far as I know, the county has been doing it.
Should we plow the snow in the wintertime?
I, I, I'm not sure. Here, here's the problem again. Some of these subdivision streets, the people, our, our people, our employees don't know whether the county or whether the private.
Mm-hmm.
We need to get that fixed.
Absolutely, I agree.
And soft, okay? And they probably didn't know that they, it was a private road at that time, and it was not on the inventory. So yes, they may have plowed it pretty well.
I'm sorry, Steve, I didn't, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I guess I did because I did interrupt you.
I know.
I do say that I don't mean to interrupt people, but I guess I do because I do.
The, here's the thing. This year, if you, if you accept the roads, this year we can patch them and, and do our patching to help hold them together till next year and then see what situation we're in next year as far as.
Because it'll go through this whole rating system.
Pacer rating.
Pacer rating.
And in the meantime, I need the plat, a copy of the plat, I need minutes of the meeting, and I need, need the minutes of this meeting to be able to send to NDOT to add, and also need shake, that's a GIS thing. So, and I can get this added. Those are due by the end of the year, December 31st.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? I know, Steve, you were talking to Joe, I don't know if you had anything else.
I think I've had a thorough meeting, and I've heard two years going back to that already. That's a, that's a road, that is a good road. We think we did, we did a subdivision, that's the factory I wanted to put in. It's not bad shape, and we did some, a dirt patch right now to hold it, maybe do a chip and seal, maybe go on it three to five years, and then we move on with paving or whatever we got to do. I think any road like that, I mean, that's what you want. It has herbs, and it's got drainage, it's what you want, so we don't have to.
Where did you find the, the?
Deed of dedication. Of course, Buckley, of course, passed away. He did the engineering at that time, so luckily, they still had the records.
I was like, this, first I saw that, this was what, kind of what I was.
I just got it today.
Enter Holy Grail, I guess, what we were waiting on.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Joe.
I guess we can give Joe that one, who's done. Okay, Angela Cox is not here. Not here. Oh, Joe, you want to come back down and do your highway update? Sorry to make you walk back and come back. So before we get started, and I'll let you talk about it. So at the Association of Indiana Counties Conference last week, Henry County and Randolph County was awarded the 2022 Local Government Cooperation Award for sharing Joe Copeland. So Joe, if you want to speak a little bit about that?
Yeah, it was awarded to Randolph and Henry for sharing a county engineer.
Who might that be?
I don't know. I don't know the fellow.
We all had a really nice picture taken and a really nice dinner.
It was, it was nice, and, and I appreciate the, the support of, of both boards of commissioners and both county councils, to, to, the opportunity to, to do this. Has it been easy? No, it hasn't been the easiest, but I, I, I kind of like, you know, solving problems and, but it, it's, it's a thing that, you know, I was asked by one council member here that, how can I do both when I'm here eight hours a day? Well, I don't have to reinvent the wheel. I've got enough years of experience, I've usually seen it or done it. So that, that helps a tremendous amount.
Thank you.
Also, I don't know if you said it, but this is the first time it's been done in Indiana.
Yes, yes. And this is Randolph's first engineer. They've never had one before, so.
Did Steve Rust commandeer the award so we, we don't have it?
Joe said he forgot, he's got it, but he didn't bring it.
I've got the smaller.
I thought he was using it for a sled or something, maybe.
Oh, the, oh, the big road sign? The big road sign? Besides a plaque, we got a, I don't know how big it was, big road, it smelled like that?
Yeah, there was a road name sign, 24 by 36.
Yeah.
It's nice.
Yeah, it's a nice road sign. Okay, now you can move on.
First item, I have two items this evening. First item is, we have a, a large culvert that's, that's, we found that is in pretty bad shape. And it's on Dublin Pike, let me get it right, .14 miles southeast of County Road 350 East. It's a boilerplate right now, 84 inches diameter, and instead of open cutting Dublin Pike, which.
We just paved.
Definitely don't want to do.
We just paved that area this year, right?
Yeah, it was, uh, last year, yeah.
Last year. That area got last year, okay.
Um, and that pipe was supposed to have been looked at, so I'll, we're taking care of that problem. So the, I got a price to slip line it. I don't know if you remember, a company called Indiana Reline up on 36, they used to do a lot of that. That was their main business. And of course, the fellow sold out, he no longer is doing that type of business, and it's hard to find somebody to do relined work. We did find a company that, that does do business with us, E3 Bridge, and they quoted us using a, what they call an ultra-flow steel or luminized type two coating, steel pipe, 78 inch diameter, to slip through the existing pipe. And then, once it's in, then they will come in and grout around or concrete around that steel pipe. They have to be very careful with how they put that concrete in, because it has to put so much in and let it set up and then, because they don't want to bend the pipe or crush the pipe. So the, the price is $49,968.50.
Do I have a mo, are there any questions first? Questions then?
You said the flow is going to be fine with that, with reducing.
Yeah, it's a smooth, the pipe that they're installing is not corrugated, it's a smooth, smooth pipe, so, and the flow will be higher because of the smooth pipe, yeah.
It's just far cheaper to do it this way than to tear the road up, obviously, right?
Well, that, and you're going to have a bump on Dublin Pike, so is it going to be, it's not, I don't think it's going to be that much more expensive to do the slip line than it would be to open cut the road and put, try to put it back together. Because I'll have to have asphalt, I'll have to have stone, I, I mean, it's quite a, quite an undertaking. Because we'll, we'll have to put back probably six inches or better of asphalt on that roadway. And clock's ticking on asphalt plant, so, yeah.
No, about four weeks?
Uh, some of them will close prior to Thanksgiving, but usually Thanksgiving is, that's it, yeah.
Six, eight weeks.
Unless they have a special project, they hold it more.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to accept a quote to replace the culvert on Dublin Pike?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve Dellinger, second by Ed Tarantino. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item is, we need a rubber tire roller, pneumatic roller, sometimes referred to. We'd been renting one off of milestone contractors for the chip seal, because ours is, it's, it's history, all right? No brakes, and it's a mess. So I went out and got some prices, using Sourcewell, you want to see those? Using the Sourcewell bid, we were able to get the, the cheapest price from Southeastern Equipment, and that was $96,418. But they, they got to add fuel and DEF and, and trucking to that for a total of $99,534. So I did check on other prices for roller, and I found a new one, and I found a used one. The new one, let me find it here. The new one is from McAllister, it's a CAT roller. And for a new one, they want $110,915 for a CAT. Then they come across a used roller that they have, and I believe, looking at the information I received, it's in Texas, but they say it's going to be shipped here, and it's a 2019 CAT pneumatic roller with 106 hours, and they want $101,000 for it. So the cheapest of the three, and, and the new CAT was a Sourcewell bid also, okay? So, so the cheapest of the three was the Bowmag for the 96, 418.
And you have said that we were paying approximately $8,400 a month to rent?
Eighty, $8,400 a month to rent a roller, yes. Next year, I expect to have it around three months, July, August, and part of September.
Any questions? Steve, you have any questions?
What would be of the three, what's your recommendation?
I, I've known, let's put it this way, I've been in counties, Franklin and Madison, who bought this same roller. Madison bought two of them. And as far as I know, they haven't, everything's been okay, so I, I don't see any reason.
The one from the Southeastern? Is that the, the one from the, the 99, 534?
Yeah.
The new one that's from Southeastern Equipment?
I've, in the past, I've owned several Bowmag rollers, and I've had good luck with them. We owned a, many years ago, we owned a what's called a Heister roller, and it, it looks, you put Heister and the, and the Bowmag together, and they're almost identical.
And the life expectancy?
Oh, better than 10 years, easy, probably closer to 20.
Okay.
You've got this in your budget?
Here's, yes.
I started to see, I thought he was going to say, here's the thing.
We had, we had, I'll tell you how it come about. We had, I had money in there, $120,000 for two patch trucks, okay? And we couldn't get them. So, you know, we went back and we had some new beds, put on some older trucks. And so we used some of that money, but, but I also have more money in there because of some, two new truck, or two used trucks I want to get, larger trucks, but I don't know if they're going to be available this year. So I would prefer to use this money for what's left over from the patch trucks and a little bit of the other truck to purchase this roller. We need it.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
For the 90, for the Southeastern?
Yes, for the one from Sourcewell.
And you seconded?
I'll second.
Motion from Steve Dellinger, second from Ed Tarantino to purchase the Southeastern Equipment. I forgot the name of the equipment because I don't do that stuff, but whatever, the roller.
Bowmag, yeah.
Yeah, that thing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Let me talk computers to you, Steve, and see if you laugh.
Also, chip seals completed for the year, just in time. Temperature's down in the 40s, that's, we got to quit.
So we got Madison done down in Knightstown.
So, so we're done. We're, they're starting paving tomorrow is the plan on 200 West. They're going to do some work around that area, head to Middletown, and then, and then head south to Knightstown.
Thank you.
Okay.
Steve, do you have, oh, do you have anything else? I'm so sorry. Steve, you have anything? Tom Green's not here.
Sheriff McCorville?
I can tell you that we're going to start the JCP program right now, October 3rd.
October 3rd?
That will give us an opportunity to move 20 plus people out of the general population into that program. It's not going to happen overnight, but Dick Rogers has accepted the position. And we should be moving forward on the 3rd, and I'll keep you informed as to, I can get my numbers every day anyway.
Right.
And I'll keep you informed as to how we're moving forward and the type of project.
Thank you. Joel, since we funded this through ARP, funding for the first year, is that going to change how we do, and, and he's a 1099, part-time 1099, correct? Just, just as any other claim?
Yeah, I think just as any other claim.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
That's all.
All right. How many days you got left?
Eighty.
Thank you. Debbie, do you have anything? Jenny is not here. Rita? You, nope, nothing? Henry County MS, they're not here, Treasure's not here, boy, nobody's here tonight. Okay, so we have, did I miss anything? I'm, I'm up to contracts and agreements. So we have Hope Initiative Build, Hope Initiative Building Realtor Contract. This is from ERA Integrity Realtors, Susan Faulkneal. It has her official, or her office policy for sellers and in the listing contract. I know Joel has reviewed this, and I don't think there was any changes made to it, but I know that you have reviewed it. Do you have anything to?
I have reviewed it, I guess maybe the only suggestion I would make, and I don't know if you're up to this, I mean, I know in discussions, she had suggested a price range to you, and in order to allow you to have some flexibility, if she thinks that needs to go up and down rather than having to wait, if you guys have a meeting, maybe I would suggest that you approve the agreement, offer us sort of list of property at a price that she recommends, and then that'll give her the flexibility for things to be adjusted, you know, marketing purposes without having to wait two weeks for it.
For another meeting.
Or you guys have to call especially if you consult purpose for a price. And that'll help price range, I think. Marketing at a price that she recommends, I think will allow you to have that flexibility.
So would, we need to change this in the agreement as well?
That would be the only thing I'd recommend, it would be at a range of price that she recommends.
Can I manually make the change? And then we can?
Yep.
Okay. Add the price. Just Realtor recommends, we're, we're good with that language? Yeah, because, I mean, we don't want to have to keep having, I mean, if it has to be adjusted downward, I'm hoping not, but if it has to be adjusted downward, then she can go ahead and do that. Any other suggestions or questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the listing contract with Susan Faulkneal, ERA Real, ERA Integrity Real Estate?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by. Motion by, uh, Steve Dellinger, second by Ed Tarantino. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, mo- and that's with the change that we just made. All those, uh, motion carries three zero, sorry. I lost my train of thought. Do you want me to just have you redo this or me marking out and doing that?
I think marking it out's probably okay, she may, she generated that from form, she may want.
What, two, okay.
Pretty clean copy of that language.
Alright. I'll make sure Debbie gets that. Thank you very much. Okay, EMS building. Let me get to where I'm at here. Okay, so at the last meeting, it was tabled, uh, any decision was tabled, uh, to this week. So I am going to, um, open this up to discussion, uh, from the table of last month. Anybody? You don't have anything to say? Uh, I, I mean, I don't know, you, you were the one that tabled it, so that's why I assumed that you would have something to say.
Uh, well, I certainly could say something, uh. We do have, we did get a bid by phone this week, uh, that was.
Let, let's rephrase that, we, I didn't, you did.
I did. Get a bid by phone, nothing on paper, no deposit. What would be the procedure if we wanted to accept that bid or?
It would have to, the same, the same, uh, options that we had the last time, we would have to reject all bids and open it back up in order for that to take place.
Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah, you'd have to reject all bids and current process and then come up with another methodology which you wanna utilize to sell a property.
Okay, I think, I don't wanna do that. I think I would be more in favor basically to just, uh, list it also.
Even to list it, you have to reject all bids and start the process over.
Yeah, I mean, and that would be one of your available options, if you had it marketed for sixty days and you did not accept.
So the option is to, right.
Reject all bids and then authorize listing property to Realtors.
Okay, well then, I guess I would make a motion to reject all bids and to off, move forward with, uh, hiring a Realtor to market this property.
We have a motion, is there a second or any other comments?
Well, I'm kinda torn on this because I'd like to saw us get a little closer to what our bid price was. I have seen the work that Rose City has done and I am pleased with the work they've done on other buildings. But I too would like to see us get, uh, a little closer to our asking price if at all possible. So with that being said, uh, I would second that motion.
Okay, so Patty has asked to speak.
After, I'm Patty Broyles. After the commissioners meeting last month.
I need you to move your microphone, there you go. There you go.
Are we good?
There you go.
Thank you. After the commissioners meeting in September fourteenth, I left very confused, aggravated, and trying to be pro- be proactive in why this was tabled. So I decided to do some research in a positive way. It was kinda like time, what have we done? When did all this start? Because it seemed like a long time for me. So this boiled down to time and money. On June twenty twenty-one, the EMS moved out.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to step just a little back away, cause you're getting some.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it's a, it's a fine.
It's a fine line.
It's a fine line, yes.
On June twenty twenty-one, EMS moved out and no lo- and there was no longer anyone occupying this building. On July twenty twenty-one, the monthly water bill is sixty-one dollars, a little over sixty-one dollars, and you're still paying it to this day.
Which we do in a lot of buildings, but go ahead.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes. Um, which, those buildings are occupied, this is an unoccupied building.
We've done the same with the Hope Building, but that's okay.
Okay. What I'm trying to say is, you're paying monthly gas, electric, and water, and that's our expense as taxpayers. On August the twenty-seventh, there was a close, uh, twenty twenty-two, there was a closed bid. No one bid. On August the first, there was an open bid for this building of a minimum of twenty-five thousand. We asked if you would look at a lower bid. The bid came in at twelve thousand, five hundred. That's what we're talking about.
Sure.
Time and money, twelve thousand, five hundred. On August the first, let's see, on August the nineteenth, a letter was sent to the commissioners for a property improvement plan, which was discussed at the last meeting. And you returned it on August the twenty-second. On August the twenty-fourth, and there was a question at the last meeting about the RDC and the BRAP money. There was an, an open public meeting on August the twenty-fourth that everyone could attend, it was open to the public, and that the RDC awarded the BRAP sixty thousand dollars. Now, to use this sixty thousand dollars on the BRAP, you have to be approved. You have to fill out an application. And to receive that sixty thousand dollars, you have to pay a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So they don't give you sixty thousand dollars unless you are invested in this building and are accepted. You were unfortunate enough not to be able to apply for this, for this, because you're a government entity. On August twenty-sixth, Rose City Partners did put in twelve thousand, five hundred bid. Along with some information, and thank you, Steve, for acknowledging this. Rose City Partners have ta- has bought five buildings that have not been occupied and turned this downtown into amazing so far. They're all rented. And, and in the last eight years, in a very timely manner. And we're giving back to the community in that manner for lower rent to bring business into Newcastle. And to put these, and to make for sure that we are going in the right direction and, and proactive. This meeting today, you said, let's just put it in a Realtor's hands. Since a year ago, twenty twenty-one, interest rates, I called a Realtor, has gone up three percent. Realtor fees are seven percent of the price. So county, we're spending money. And we are having to spend money. In summary, it all boils down to time and money. This building needs improvements now, and especially for winter, we're running out of time, this building is. Speaking with Mr. Melton, the city, uh, inspector, he said, a letter, no matter what happens today, will be going out. And if it's passed by you, you all will be responsible for it. For improvements, it's an improvement letter, because this has to have, you have to get improvements, and this building has to be fixed. This building will be, be so, doing this a year and a half later, you've already lost one year of taxes. One year. If you wait much longer, you're gonna lose two years, cause, cause January, in January of twenty twenty-two, uh, twenty-three, you will have lost two years. We don't wanna lose any money. So it's up to you, but we're talking about twelve thousand, five hundred, and I don't think to demolish this, it's gonna cost you thirty-four thousand.
No, but you're gonna demolish the building, Patty?
No, because you have to do it a home improvement, and it has to be done in a timely manner. So you can fix it and keep it on your tax or let someone else. Thank you.
Any comments?
Well, I guess part of my frustration with this was, uh, and Patty's right, and I, and I agree, and that was part of the purpose for doing this. And our original plan was, we wanted someone to have a plan for the building, and that was part of the reason why I believe nobody bid on it. When we first put it up for bid, was there was supposed to be a definitive plan going forward, once we sold it, that it would be occupied, refurbished, and taken care of, and there would be something done with the building, other than it'd just be bought and somebody else leave it set. So that didn't happen. Uh, I guess my second round of frustration came with, we had another bid that was double that, and then at the ninth hour, it was pulled, and some of the circumstances surrounding that with the comments that were made were very concerning to me, very puzzling and very disheartening, to say the least. And at that point, there was still not a definitive plan from anyone on what was going to be done with the building, other than refurbishing it and hopefully getting someone in there. And like I said earlier, your guys' record, uh, at the, and the buildings you've done have, have been outstanding, so I, I don't discredit that one bit. But I guess then it comes down to where we're cheating the county as far as money that could've came in, that all of a sudden didn't come in. So I, on that side of that coin, we lost a bunch of money. And that was puzzling to me as to why that happened. And we have since had conversations with other people who said if they would've known about some of the money that, for the building, they would've offered more money for the building. So now we're kind of in a quandary, do we take what we can get, or would do we see if we can get more? Because there again, that's your guys' tax money that we could be getting in that comes back from buildings that we're selling, because I'm like you guys, it's my money too. So if we can get more to help in some other area of county government, then to me, that's what we should be doing. So like I said, that's where I guess I'm a little bit confused on, uh, how this is playing out. And like I said, some of the comments that were made and why the, uh, other bids were pulled, I, I guess it's, it's just.
It was concerning, yeah, it was concerning.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, a building, most of the time that you were talking about, that building was available and for sale, and no one bid, uh, over a year. So if no one bids, we can't sell the building. During that time, Realtors did tell us, they had people interested in buying the building, but not the way it was advertised. Like I said, I got fond, Steve, Steve got a bid over the phone, uh, two weeks ago, and it was upped when they called me. I'm not sure what the property is worth, but on the very next block, it's a very nice building, I like the way it looks on the front, but it has, it's in terrible shape. It has no plumbing, no heating, no, nothing, and it just sold for over a hundred thousand dollars. So it sounds pretty high to me too, but one block away, the very next block, a building sold for over a hundred thousand, I think ours ought to be worth at least the minimum price, twenty-five thousand, that we asked for it. I think that was very reasonable, but, uh, and in light of the fact that possibly two hundred thousand would be invested in the building in order to get the sixty thousand, you gotta put a hundred and fifty in, that's two-ten. So the difference between two-ten and two-thirty-five isn't that great. And that would, you only get the, what, sixty thousand if you put the entire hundred and fifty in. You get forty percent of whatever you put in, which is a good deal. But it wasn't available to anyone else who bid, except a few days before the bid closed. So that was another problem we had.
I guess.
Mayor?
Sure, ma'am.
Sure.
You guys call it, uh, the EMS building, I still call it the newsstand. Uh, w- when I was a kid, Mike Broyles' grandfather owned the building, owned the newsstand. Uh, and every time I'd go in, he'd pull a sheet over a certain rack of magazines that.
Should not be seen.
So all he wanted to let me do is buy candy and, and not, and not look at magazines. With the, uh, track record that, that they have in, in buying dilapidated buildings in our community, uh, especially in downtown, they've definitely increased the value of a lot of buildings in our downtown. And it's, it's kinda mind-boggling to me, uh, you, you guys have the opportunity to wash your hands of this, get it out of your hair, done, forgot, over with. But you continue to, to wanna play ping pong with it. Uh, my own city council has questioned me in a public meeting as of why I've let you go so long with, with not asking for something to be done with the building. If it was a private owner, they would've been asked way before now to have a, a plan put together. So, uh, part of it's my fault that I let it linger this long, but I have to.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Can I ask why, uh, a private citizen was told the letter was gonna be coming out to us tomorrow, depend, no matter what, and we weren't informed? Or given a heads up?
Have no idea what you're talking about.
I don't know, she said that she talked to your building inspector and said that a letter would be going out tomorrow, no matter what happened today. I, I had, I mean, I ta- I talked to Mr. Melton yesterday.
I have no idea.
I, I talked to Mr. Melton yesterday.
Okay, I called, he called me today, I called Kenny, Mr. Melton, I should say, and asked him what the letter said. It was a letter of, uh, intentions.
Yeah, we filled it out and sent it back.
And it was filled out, I give you the dates. He said the next letter, which would be going out this week, possibly tomorrow, would be a letter of repairs. He said, Patty, you realize you will be receiving this letter if you purchase the building. Ours, Rose City Partners. I said, yes, he said, so a letter will be going out. You won't receive a letter, but you will now.
Well, as a, depending upon, he asked me, yes, when I talked to him yesterday, and I wanna thank him, actually.
He said he had talked to you.
Uh, our building inspector was on vacation and we did something inspected, and I called him and he, he scheduled to do it, and I appreciate.
He said he did.
I appreciate that. But we talked briefly about the EMS building and nothing was, you know, was said of, hey, if you, you know, I mean, I'm assuming he knew it was tabled, I, uh, I believe he knew it was tabled from two weeks ago. Um, that he would've mentioned it to me, but that's okay.
He said that he had talked to you about it, very briefly.
Yeah, all he asked was.
He had tried to get ahold of Mr. Dillinger, no return call.
Oh, I return call, but nobody answers the phone down there when I call, so.
And then, um, he said he would bend. And then, um, he said he would be here tonight to explain it to you. I ask if I could mention that the letter would be mailed out because of the next step. I'm just forewarning you.
Sure.
And he forewarned me. I'm gonna get a letter too, if it goes our way.
And, and I appreciate that. And, and I will say, the one thing that concerned me was the, um, the manner in which, and the reasoning, and how the circumstances was of the other bid being pulled.
I can address that a little bit. That other bid was pulled, this is an open bid. Um, we even got a phone call, saying that we were lower than the other bid, before it was closed.
Yeah, we called, yeah, we called, because it's an open bid.
Yeah, it was an open bid.
Absolutely.
They had the same, but it was a nonprofit. It was a nonprofit. So, it wouldn't have gone back on the tax roll anyway. They want it back on the tax roll.
Well, I guess my concern, cause when it was told that, the circumstances of it being pulled, uh, when we sold the annex building, everybody was behind a not-for-profit getting that building, versus a private citizen. You know, when the, when the situation was reversed, uh, everybody wanted the not-for-profit to, lobbied for, championed for the not-for-profit to get this one. But the roles are reversed when it's this one.
These are all local people. Local nonprofit, local people. That is not, that's from Minnesota, the gentleman that you awarded it to. That's from Minnesota. We have a track record. You've seen that track-
I understand, I'm just telling you what my concern was, the, the circumstances of the-
On the nonprofit, I think they give you a reason, why didn't they? I don't have that letter.
No, they, they didn't, uh, somebody else's-
It was all local?
It was, uh, the person that asked them to pull the bid, told us what was said. The person that asked them to pull the bid, said that they had asked them to pull the bid. And that's all I'm gonna say. I'm not gonna name names.
Uh, I don't have any idea of, of any of that. But I, I guess, my correlation is, is that, uh, the building and that business have been in Mike's family for years. And I, I think that connection, you know, when you, uh, have family that owned something sooner, maybe they looked at, the, the other group looked at that. I, I really don't know. But, uh, since his grandfather owned it, and he has interest in it, with the, I'm just speaking for them, that puts it back in the tax roll, it's gonna turn into a beautiful building, it's a historic site. It used to be a church, originally it was church. And we have pictures-
It was the first building platted in the city.
And, uh, so, I mean, I, I would like to see something done with it sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess one of my other questions is, when the, the person that, seems like everybody uses to do the brickwork, which is the big concern with the front of that building. And you're talking about the letter. I was told that he can't start on it until December. So, because he's so covered up, that he can't do it. So, you're, the timeline with everything, as far as repairs and stuff, obviously the brickwork won't be done until almost the end of the year. So, I don't know how that's affecting, with these letters that supposedly are going out with everybody.
Well, it would be the most solid, i- if it was in, uh, next week, or in January. But we had a plan, I mean, we haven't had a plan. We've asked for a plan. Real simple, it's not been complicated, we've asked for a plan. And, uh, it's my fault that I, that I've, I've let it go too long. And, uh, because you, you know, I feel like we've had, the, the very first day, you guys called me about the building, and I said, "You got architect and engineer right there, go call him." I don't have the knowledge, ask him what to do with it. So, I, I, I let it go way too long, and we should've sent you letters out sooner.
We'll get the, we'll get the letter tomorrow, no matter, I mean, obviously there's a, there's a vote that has to take place. But if we get the letter tomorrow, well, I guess we'll deal with it tomorrow.
Well, uh-
No ma- I mean, if, if the vote, I mean, there's been a, a motion and a second.
Until I walked in here, I didn't know that there was letters going out to- tomorrow. I, I, I-
I'm just a little disappointed that I, that, you know, when I, if I talked to the building inspector, and specifically talked about the EMS building, that a heads up wouldn't have been given. Doesn't mean I don't like Kenny. I'm just saying, it's just a little disappointing that I hear, that if we don't approve this, that we'll be getting a letter, that'll go out tomorrow, from-
Well, it kinda sounded like to me, that he was warning them, that if they did get it tonight, that they'd be getting a letter anyway.
And that's, and that's fine. And that's fine.
How I took it, I-
That's fine, that's fine, just, that's fine. Yeah, so, all right, thank you. Anybody else? Sure, Mike?
I, I don't really care what happens at this point. But I wanna clear up a few things. Nobody from Rose City Partners asked-
It was not anybody from Rose City Partners, I do know that. I will say that, I'm sorry, I wanna make that clear. It was nobody from Rose City Partners that did that.
We have the same mission, to save the buildings downtown.
Absolutely.
From what I heard, once they found out that we had bid, they talked as a board, and decided to rescind their bid. That's the way I understand it. And the other thing is, that if nobody would've known about the BRAP, if my wife wouldn't have suggested going to talk to the RDC about that. And nobody would've had that, that chance at the 60,000, if I wouldn't approach them about that at that time. Now, anybody has that opportunity, and that's the way I wanted it. I didn't want it to be Rose City Partners. I want it to be to the building. So, that's the way they set it up, so.
It's to the building, but it's, the developer still has to be approved.
Well, sure, that's just the way BRAP did all the other previous ones, so.
Yeah, correct. But yes, let me make perfectly clear. It was nobody from your business that said that they pressured, or suggested. It was not.
Just wanna make sure, uh, clear-
Yes, and I wanna make that, if I have to repeat it five more times, I wanna make sure. It was not anybody from Rose City Partners that said that they were involved in getting the other to re- uh, remove their bid. So, so we have a motion and a second. Anything else, anybody else? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. So, what I do want to do at this point, um, is to set a meeting to, do we need to do another meeting to move to a realtor?
I mean, you could, because personal services, I mean, you could invite-
Do the same, invite, and-
But in order to execute a listing, I don't think I could approve that.
Right, okay, okay. So, w- once we get one, we will have a special meeting to approve the listing. In that manner, so. Okay, uh, Sprinkler. So, we, uh, I probably should've put this under reports, but, um, we have a report from, uh, the Spr- Work Relief Center, or Transition Center, however you wanna word it, uh, where they, um, inspected the Sprinkler system. And everything passed with flying colors. We have the homeowner repair and improvement program. I believe this is the last, uh, one, they did the last, um, applicant last Friday. Uh, we just need approval for the homeowner repair and improvement program. Uh, so if I have a motion to accept, uh, this program, draw request.
So moved.
Or the, uh, program, there's another, there's a draw request besides that one, excuse me, I'm sorry. This is the one under tab, uh, Ed, if you wanna look at it, under tab, uh, eight. It is the Henry County Approval for Homeowner Repair and Improvement Program.
Right, Steve made the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
I was second.
Uh, motion by Steve Dillinger, second by Ed Tarantino, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. And then this is the actual, the last draw from this program, I believe. According to Kerry Riley. And this, in, in the amount of 22,516 dollars. I have a motion to pay that claim.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve Dillinger, second by Ed Tarantino, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Three zero. And then, so, I have written on mine, Purdue Extension, and now I've probably lost my letter. Uh, Purdue Extension had sent, thank you very much. Purdue Extension, uh, on behalf of Purdue Henry County Extension Office, we would like to notify you of the closure of our offices on the following days to comply with Purdue University's holiday schedule. Our two secretaries are willing to take comp time off for these five days. We wish to close the office from Wednesday, November 23rd, through Friday, November 25th, for Thanksgiving. And from Thursday, December 23rd, through Monday, January 2nd. Uh, we hope this meets your approv- approval. Please feel free to contact me for any questions at this time. Do I have a motion to accept their office closures for the holidays of Thanksgiving and Christmas and New Years?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve Dillinger, second by Ed Tarantino, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, um, three zero. And then there has been a request, and I know you guys don't have your, do you have your calendar down here? Uh, request for a joint council commissioner work session. Do you have any, I know I have stuff on the, I can't the fourth. Um, or the fifth. The sixth, October the sixth. You have something on the sixth?
Only at, in the evening, all day is clear.
Only in the e- oh, is that the, um, SEDs at Richmond?
Right.
You, you won't be here on the sixth? Can we have Kayla, or?
I'll just change my plan.
No, 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 no.
I'm not gonna bet to anybody, so I'll just change my-
No, we can, we'll move it to the next week. Um, I just, I can't do the fourth, I have a, a, a family funeral to attend. Um, what about the third? Do we have enough time to schedule doing, uh? I guess if we did the public, public notice tomorrow, we could do the Monday, the third.
Monday's good for me.
Is Monday good for you? Monday's good for me. Debbie, is Monday good for you?
Yeah, you can hold your, at 8:00, 5:00, and then at night, yeah.
Okay, so if we say, uh, 10 o'clock. Monday the third at 10 o'clock, for a joint council commissioner work session. Pending the fact that a quorum of the council can attend. Or maybe even not a quorum, uh, that the council can attend. So, we have resolution 2022, I guess I better write that down, October 3rd, 10 o'clock. I'll forget it. Uh, resolution 2022-09-2818. This is transferring, uh, property to the town of Knightstown. Where, whereas pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-24-6, Henry County has a lien on and an interest in properties offered for tax sale that are not sold, and such liens are evidenced by a tax sale certificate titled in the name of the Board of Commissioners of Henry County. And whereas the town of Knight- town of Knightstown, Indiana, has requested that the Board of Commissioners transfer the tax sale certificate for a certain property located within its corporate limits, commonly known as 237 South Jefferson Street, Knightstown, Indiana, parcel ID 020-07107-00 real estate. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of Henry County wishes to transfer its interest in the tax sale certificate for the real estate to the town of Knightstown, Indiana, now therefore it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Henry County, Indiana, that all right, title, and interest of Henry County in any tax sale certificate related to the real estate and all lien ri- all lien rights it holds as a result of delinquent unpaid taxes on the real estate is hereby transferred to the town of Knightstown, Indiana. The county auditor shall deliver the tax sale certificate for the real estate the town of Knightstown, Indiana, passed and adopted by the Board of Commissioners by Henry County on this 28th day of September. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution? And, and this actually just went through the tax sale last week, and did not sell. So, there's a clean tax s- self- certificate.
Do you have any comments on that, Joe?
No, I mean, that's not, you have the, the authority to transfer tax sales certificates. You, from time to time, you've done that. Transfers under the city of Newcastle, a public sale by the land bank. Uh, understanding this property has a structure on it, it's in pretty bad shape. So, I think Knightstown's intent is to paint out a property and demolish the structure.
I move we adopt.
Second.
Motion by Steve Dillinger, second by Ed Tarantino, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. So, it says on the itinerary, vacating a public way in Lewisville. Uh, it's actually New Lisbon, we, I missed that one. And, uh, this one, uh, we must hold a public hearing. Do I need to do anything to create a public hearing, or just move, move on?
Just to say you're calling the public hearing open, and ask if anybody wants to address their vacation at this alleyway.
You're Don Thomas. Uh, so we, I will call this public hearing, uh, open. Uh, Mr. Thomas, do you wanna say anything? You don't have to, we have it all, I mean, if you'd like, you don't have to. We have it all written here on the ordinance. And, are you sure? Okay, I'll go ahead and read the ordinance, and then if anybody wants to comment, I'll ask again. Whereas Donald E. Thomas and Robin L. Thomas have filed a petition to vacate a public right of way that can be described as follows. That portion of the platted right of way between 4919 South Broad Street, New Lisbon, Indiana, parcel number 002-05302-00. And 4927 South Broad Street, New Lisbon, Indiana, parcel 002-05303-00. Whereas Henry County has no need to utilize this area as a public way, and it is not utilized by the public as means of ingress or egress. And now therefore be it ordained, ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Henry County, that the petition to vacate real estate filed by Donald E. Thomas and Robin L. Thomas, in which they seek to vacate a public way contiguous to real estate they own, should be granted. The public way to be vacated is not located within any incorporated municipality. Further, be it further ordained, that the following public way is hereby vacated to wit. That portion of the platted right of way between 4919 South Broad Street, New Lisbon, Indiana, parcel 002-05302-00. And 4927 South Broad Street, New Lisbon, Indiana, parcel 002-05303-00. A map depicting the area to be vacated is attached to this ordinance as Exhibit A. This ordinance shall be in effect from, from and immediately after its passage, adopted by the Board of Commissioners of Henry County this day of 2022. Now, does anybody have anything, any comments? Do I have a motion to accept this, uh, ordinance 2022-09-28004, vacating this alleyway?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve Dillinger, second by Ed Tarantino, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Congratulations, Mr. Thomas. Uh, okay, so this one, uh, do I need to close the public hearing? Public hearing is now closed. Um, so this one, we will not be voting on tonight, is just to, um, introduce, uh, another or, uh, vacating of a public way. Um, do I need to read the ordinance?
I don't think you need to read the ordinance at all.
It's just the ad, um-
No, but it's being introduced, and you may give a general description of where the area is.
Uh, so this ordinance 2022-09-28005, um, is a vacation of a public right of way. Um, it is a plat of DeHart's Second Addition to the city of Newcastle. Uh, the address, the plat of alley depicted, of course, is, uh, 3108 East Brown Road, 3114 East, runs between the properties commonly known as, 3108 East Brown Road, 3114 East Brown Road, 3120, 3124 East Brown Road, to the south. 260 north, 260, 262, 266, 268, 272, 274, 278, 280, 284, 286, 290, 292, 294, 298. Hillsborough Road, uh, to the west. And 715, 719, 723, 727, 731, 735, 739, 734, 749, 751, and 755 Kentland Avenue to the east. So, this is basically Hillsborough Road, Brown Road, and Kentland Avenue, uh, in that section. Um, so, this will be taken up, we have to do public notice in the newspapers, and again, hold a public hearing, so that probably won't take place. Timing wise, getting everything advertised in the two newspapers until the end of October.
Second October.
The second October meeting. So, we were just introducing that. And then, the, uh, resolution for, um, ARP, which is 2022-09-28-019, which, all I need to read is Exhibit A. And that is from 21. Oh, I guess we did add- Oh, I guess we did add this one. We were questioning whether we added the twenty-five thousand, and we did. Yeah, okay. So you can ignore my email this, today, adding it back in. The sum of one hundred thousand dollars to contribute to the cost of the South Henry Regional Waste District expansion is number twenty-one. Twenty-two is the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to contribute to the cost of extending sanitary sewer service to the intersection of State Road one-oh-nine and Interstate seventy, and the sum of up to twenty-five thousand dollars for the payment of legal and professional fees in connection with the administration of revenue received through the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund. So the hundred thousand dollars for the Southwest, or South Henry Regional Waste District is to upgrade the lift station at Flying J, and then come down, instead of going down through Spiceland, add another line around twenty-five west and back down to forty. And then, of course, the extending the sanitary sewer to State Road one-oh-nine and seventy is for the expansion that's going on and coming in that direction. So do I have a motion to accept these three items into the exhibit A of the ARP resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve Dillinger, second by Ed Tarantino. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Does anybody else have anything that they want to say before I accept a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.